You ready?
Ready.
Beer board meeting called order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow. Councilman Stanley. Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of previous meeting dated August 22nd, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under a new business today, we'll have a request from Mr. Patel at 2900 Sevier Avenue in Knoxville, Tennessee. The Clinch Market Deli at 185 Clinch Avenue for a Class B off-premise beer permit. Yes, sir. Can you approach? You approach the podium, please. The podium?
Hi. My name is Naris Kumar B. Patel. Clinch Avenue, 185 Clinton.
Have you, do you have, do you own any other stores?
Yeah, AM Market.
And where's that located?
2900 Sevier Avenue, Knoxville.
Okay, alright. So what's your process at your store in Knoxville to, as far as, when purchases of alcohol?
It's the same, like, I got for exam before and then meeting.
So you ask for ID every time? Is that the process?
Yes.
Do you have anything that's tied into your registers where you punch in the birth date?
Yes.
Okay. Guys, y'all have any questions?
No.
Any questions from staff?
What is this, 185?
That's the old town talk.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. I say this to everyone, we take selling to minors seriously as far as being illegal. And fines, you can probably count on a fine being $1,500 for your first offense. That's what we've done in the past, so. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn the beer board. Beer board's adjourned. Open to a regular council meeting.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow. Councilman Stanley. Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, thank you for this day and for your many blessings. Thank God for you, to serve you and to serve our city. I pray now that you would be with us as we conduct business. I also pray for the employees as they do their job each and every day. Thank you for the city we live in and how you blessed us. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do you hear a motion of the review and approval of meetings of, I'm sorry, minutes of the previous meeting dated August 22nd, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll be recognizing any grievances from citizens or we'll take some praises to. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Dana Worthington, 438 Eagle Bend, Rockland, Ohio. I wanted to say that I have lived there for 29 years. I've seen a lot of changes, but I do love my home and I love my town and I'm appreciative of it. But I wanted to say, I've written this, giving him the same advice seems to be overwhelming to the city officials to care for the citizens who are trying to do better. We need some relief over this amount of traffic, speed, and so on. A system that's working on its own, but with many issues that seem endless. Much more traffic, poor road conditions, and behavior in this hub tape consisting of CEB, Parks and Recreation, Power Clinch, Public Works, UPS, FedEx, delivery trucks, and hammer trucks are daily using our home, our hub. That's normal. But 7,000 cars a week isn't. That's a lot. Officer Becker talked to my daughter-in-law, it's almost been, I guess, two years, knowing it was a problem, but nothing has changed. And I did receive information from him that's still about the same, as many as 1,400 a day. That's a lot. It isn't a highway, I would think, unless you all change something. It has a major intersection with at least six things going at the same time. Weaver Street is in, people going out. This way, it's just, I've counted, six actions at the same time. And so far, it works and it's a dance. But I now have four seconds to get out of my back. Might probably have to park, I have to park backwards. And some people are really nice and they stop and let you do it. And then other people just swerve around, which is dangerous as well. Also, they forget that there's driveways there. I would like to know if you could put some kind of signage there to let those people know. I know we can't change everything, but we can try. It is hard to see at Weaver because there are shrubs and a wall and a crosswalk is pretty much ignored. So you guys are right. It doesn't seem to matter. But we still care and hope that there is something that can be done. You are experienced men who know this town and how to make a wise decision. Your example is by meeting others. Given your experience and your wisdom, can serve a city or town anywhere. The complaint of the people is fair and it would be wise to listen and try to understand. This advice is concerned with the welfare of the people and the development of the relationship with the officials have with the citizens. This is the kind of leadership that Christ wants his people to exhibit. Remember, we are all citizens. Good advice is advice that seeks to serve others. I have sought advice from different people, including elders, peers, and family members, but being overwhelmed by the conflicting answers from our leaders. I left my ideas the last time here in a portfolio. If it still exists, the measures I suggested may not all be used, but I did the best of my ability. I hope you will follow Christ's advice and make the right decision, not just my little part of Eagle Bend, but other parts of the city that are taking matters into their own hands. Mayor, the city manager, our leaders, we need to make the right decisions and the counsel, and also respect on either side as God would want it to be. I pray every day that our leaders will help the citizens as we continue our quest. Let me finish by asking Mayor Burton why he told a family member, a very close family member, to call him instead of going to the council. He did that a year and a half ago when I sent an email and he told my son that it was best that I contact him and he gave him his personal phone number, which I've done. It's not always been nice. And I felt like he was on my side. He mentioned Mr. Howe 17 times, Roger this, Roger that. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. And also, the city manager was making promises about his engineers coming by my house. He said, you may even see me down there. I looked for him. He said to look for him, but this was over a year ago. Also, he told me on the phone 1st of July that he was not going to put another speed bump down the tracks. And he said, I've already done that. I put three and I'm not doing another. My son and I checked and there are two. Mr. Burton said, oh, he must be talking about the railroad track. Well, that's not a speed bump. And the railroad track is so beat down, people going like this, so it's pathetic. It needs work too. And also, he said, at the time, he said, I'm not gonna do it. And I said, but why? And he said, because people on Eagle Bend would be upset. Well, I live on Eagle Bend. And, hang on a second, I want to spell the words. But he told me on 1st of July that he was going, was not going to put another speed bump down through the tracks. And he said, I've already done that. I've put down three and I'm not doing any more. That's when he said, oh, it's probably to the tracks. My son and I checked and there are two. I asked city manager why not? And he said, because people on Eagle Bend would be upset. Well, I live on Eagle Bend, so I'm curious. Who's going to be upset? I'm a little concerned who that would be. I talked to the city manager in July and then he said he talked to his engineers. And I said, that was a year ago. And he said, no, that was five days ago, precisely five days ago. This was in July. And they were thinking maybe they would put parking places in front of our houses since we like to park on the street. Well, we don't, those three people don't park on the street. We have driveways. So why would an engineer suggest that we put parking places in front of our houses? Maybe that wasn't totally correct. And like I said, I'm down to the four seconds. That's very, very scary. It's really hard. I would like some answers. And I will get the right answer because people on Eagle Bend being upset doesn't seem to be a good reason. I'd like for this to be taken seriously. Finally, what is being reported as to what people don't like about the speed humps? My family and I find that they need to slow traffic down at least a small amount. And you also have to remember, because I'm there 24 hours a day, because I live and work on the same property, and I've done that for 29 years, the biggest majority of people are turning onto Weaver. And they swerve. But there's nothing to tell them that they can't. So I guess they'll just keep doing it. Thank you. I give my time. Anything? Is there anything to say?
Well, I guess I can say a couple of things. You know, I felt, we've tried for a year and a half.
You have.
Just to, just to, just to do some things. You know, like last night, you asked to move the crosswalk. You can't move the crosswalk.
I didn't ask to move the crosswalk. I made it more visible. That's not exactly what I meant. That's okay.
Okay, but that's what you, that's what you said.
But that's one thing. That's just one of the many. And I also said that in my case. I said, you know, that's more of the speaking. That is an issue because there's, there's.
I'm listening. But the speed.
Inability issue.
The, the, the speed humps.
Doesn't matter that there's no protection in that part of the street and I'm having to be subjected to that every day? I'm sorry, Zach, I don't know about you, but I know that there's not 7,000 cars a day passing by your house. Because the majority of them are turning. I watch it. I have a video footage. I've counted myself. Is that appropriate?
Well, what I would think would be appropriate is, is that speeding is an issue, not just at Eagle Bend. It's.
I want to just.
It's Ridgeview, it's Riverside, it's Westwood, it's Glendale. And so, but let me.
We're not talking about that.
Let, I, I'm sympathetic to your cause and I'm trying to bring an awareness to, it's, it's, it's a global issue. It's not just Eagle Bend. It's lots of places. Dana, let me, let me finish. You've spoken, I'm trying to help you. Let me help you. Speeding is a, is an issue lots of places. And, and it's, it's an issue that I've asked law enforcement for their input. It's very difficult to tame. I mean, I mean, I think, I think it's very difficult from a practical standpoint, unless we're gonna just put police officers everywhere at all times, it's very difficult to completely solve. Now, I do believe that the intersection you speak of is dangerous from a, from a driver's perspective because you seem, it seems to be you have a, you're blind there when you're coming in. And so, I, I do think it's appropriate and some of your, some of your requests seem to be, you know, in my opinion, reasonable. It's just a matter of, you know, can we, can we implement them? What is the cost? And, and I think it's, if you, if we can have your patience, which I know is wearing thin, I can hear it. I understand.
No.
But, but I, I, I get it. I, children are on that street.
And nobody, Roger Howe doesn't get it and Mr. Burton does.
Well, in fairness, I think, I, I think that they're, they're, they're trying. Now, obviously.
Why would he want me to contact him? He told my son, it's best that she not contact the whole entire city council. Why?
I think to be helpful. I think Scott's trying to be.
Why would Scott take over my ability?
I don't think he was trying to do that, ma'am, in all fairness. But, but it's, you raise good issues and they need, you think we want to address them. And, and you know, I'm, I'm sure that, that we can get together and maybe, maybe have a traffic forum, maybe have an opportunity to have a workshop that we can.
I'm begging. When I was here in April, I asked for that. I said, could I, you know, you're welcome to come to my home. Let's watch it together. Let's see what we come up with. And Mr. Howe said, oh, I'll be down there. This was a year ago. He said, you could probably see me down there. Well, I've never seen you down there.
Mayor, I'd like to address two things she said. I'm not gonna argue with her. After she did come to the meeting, I'm not sure what month it was, and Bill can help me out a little bit. We did meet with the traffic engineer on Eagle Bend. And we did look at a different traffic calming suggestion from the traffic engineer. And one of them was the on-street parking. Right now, people park on the street from approximately the Kincaid House. What, what blocks that bill?
700.
700 block up to about the Old Little China. And one type of traffic calming, excuse me, Dana, I'm talking. One type of traffic calming device is where the on-street parking is, is actually to narrow the, the lanes of traffic down. And what we would do on that side of the street, we would actually put on-street parking with a white line narrowing the lanes of traffic down. On the other side of the street, where, where the vice mayor lives, we would put a yellow line down, narrowing that side down too, allowing no parking. So you're actually channeling both lanes of traffic down in those three or four blocks, which would slow traffic down. And that is a federal highway design for, for slowing traffic down. So that is one option in, in those three or four blocks that would slow traffic down. Also, that was something that the traffic engineer looked at. That was what I was talking about, was Ms. Worthing, Ms. Worthing. What we talked about, the speed humps, I told her from the speed hump on Market Street, from there to the last one on Eagle Bend is six tenths of a mile. That we had three speed humps, a railroad track, plus the radar detection sign. So actually, well, there was four types of devices in six tenths of a mile on Market and Eagle Bend that were traffic control devices to slow traffic down. That was the two things I tried to explain to her.
Can I, can I comment?
Sure.
And I'm not arguing either. But when you stood up, you mentioned my name, McBride.
Well, because you were going to talk. I was trying to stay on my time, ma'am.
Well, it's just like then, it's just like now. I conducted that meeting back in April. And we gave you ample time to talk. I did that evening. But then, when I tried to speak, you wouldn't let me speak. Just kind of you're doing now. You're talking over top. No, ma'am, you may not. You are talking over the top of everyone up here. Every person up here has talked. We've not talked over the top of you, but you've talked over the top of each one of us.
You're here on another call. Except for these men.
But my point is, back to Councilman Faris' point, and that is, traffic and speed is a problem everywhere, in the whole United States of America. There's more 16-year-olds today than there ever have been, meaning that there's more drivers now than ever. Now, one question I've got for you, Chief Becker. The detection device that's up there, what data do you have from that? I know you gave us some data back in April at that meeting. What is that device telling us recently? And you may not have exact numbers, but you can give us an idea.
I don't have exact numbers.
That's fine.
Most current numbers, but what it told us was the average speed was 18 miles per hour past that speed sign. It also gave us the vehicle count, which I don't remember what it was. It showed to me that, that the speed humps are really working.
Okay.
Because we looked at the data before the speed humps, and the average speed was more.
Okay. So based on your data that's collected by that device, which is an official device, speed has decreased and traffic volume has decreased?
Yes.
No.
Dana, I'm sorry, you said you had one more thing you'd like to talk about, and then we need to move on, okay?
Yes. Because it's the same thing that happened last time. He starts talking about 16-year-olds. And you weren't here and nobody else spoke. He told his story. Mr. Becker, Officer Becker told his. But I got information sent to me when I went to the city, and there's as many as 7,000 cars. Now, granted, the whole world is driving too fast. We know that. But I've talked to y'all twice and I've talked to several people here, and every person strays from the actual space that I'm talking about. We're not talking about the other Eagle Bend. We've got my Eagle Bend who's taking the bulk of it. And I'm speaking for me. I'm speaking for myself. I mean, I have a beautiful home and I'm watching seven, that transfer trucks. They're not as sad, I've noticed that. But I don't really understand, Mr. McBride, why you keep throwing in the 16-year-old. The majority of the people are in the.
There's a lot of things I don't understand you're throwing in. If you've just got one for me, that's it.
I didn't throw in, it wasn't right.
What, I, I think an issue that you speak to, while it is a personal issue, it's an issue shared by a lot of people, not just on, not just on Eagle Bend, but, well, not everybody comes to council. So what, what I think, due to the interest of time, we, I'm sure that, that the, that city manager, we could have a workshop, open to the public. Attendance optional, obviously, for, for folks, but we could, and we could spend as much time as we need to to address the issue that you speak of. And hopefully, these other people on Glendale and Ridgeview and Riverside will participate as well. Because right now, you're trying to address a problem. We hear it.
This specific.
I understand. But, but, but given the time constraints, you're not gonna get an answer to your satisfaction right at this moment.
I've had it for two years now.
Well, I understand. Because now, you've raised an issue. We have the issue. And I'm trying to provide a, a, a forum for us to further talk about this.
Okay, I have one more question my daughter-in-law wants to talk.
Yes.
So you're saying, no worries, that the whole town needs to come together in a forum to fix my little side of the street. Because it's not Ridgeview, it's not Riverview, it's not West.
Let me, let me ask you in all sincerity, what is it you're asking council to do?
Well, I've asked for, where he says the parking spaces, that's a good idea, as long as they're not for parking. You know, you've mentioned putting some lines. That can be drawn. I put it in my portfolio, but I'm sure it's been thrown away. But that was in there. I would like to have a speed hump that's not, doesn't have to be like a plunk, a plunk, but it would help slow people down. Now, Officer Becker, not arguing with you, but being that I stand up there and I monitor, people going 18 are the ones that are turning on Weaver. And the ones that are coming down, they're 25 to 30 miles an hour. But the 18 miles he's talking about are the ones that are turning. Because I check it every morning. It takes me 19. Say I go 19 miles an hour coming to the Pivens and go down to pass my house.
Thank you, Dana. We need to move on. Would you like to speak to, please, just state your name and address, please?
Amanda Powers, 509 Eagle Bend. And originally, I wasn't gonna speak, but I was kind of appalled by how Mr. McBride addressed Dana Worthington. So that's why I want to speak now. My, my stuff will just be anecdotal. I agree with Officer Becker. I think that the traffic has slowed down since the bridge has reopened. I think that when the bridge was being worked on, that Eagle Bend became a pass-through for most, most of the city of Clinton. And so that's where the traffic picked up. And that's where this issue first was brought up to Dana. And that's why she first originally brought it up to you at that time. I think the transfer trucks are the biggest issue. She's on a different stretch of Eagle Bend than me and Councilman Faris because we are on the more residential side where she's still on that business end. So her issue is unique. The, where my house is, is directly where the sign says, "Speed Hump." The speed humps are directly in front of my house. I can be playing in my front yard with my son where one of your, I'm not sure how you addressed it. Mr. Howe, you said, "Speed Deterrence" or something along those lines. So I can watch one of those. The speed indicator, whatever radar, whatever you want to call it, is in front of her house. I can be standing on my, in front of my house. People will nearly come to a crawl to go over it. And by the time they come over to a crawl, I can see it flashing down at her house because they're already going over 30 miles an hour. I believe Officer Becker, when it starts to flash, am I right? Is it at 30 miles an hour that it flashes? Because it goes up and it starts to flash once they get, once it gets to a certain, once it goes too fast. And I can watch people, like I said, go to almost zero, go over the speed bump. By the time they get to her house, we maybe live, you all have seen the distance, 300 yards apart, and they're already speeding again. So yes, those deterrents are there, but in those small stretches, they're speeding right back up. I've noticed an increase in tractor-trailers turning the opposite way, so going down past our houses. I've never seen that before. I don't know where they're going. That was her original question. That's how she started this quest. What is Eagle Bend supposed to be? Is it a residential road or is it a business street? Now, technically, her end is still business. But with all this renovation and all the great things that we're doing to bring businesses and stuff to downtown Clinton, what do we want it to be? We want it to be where people can walk. People talk about walking on our street all the time. Every time I leave her house, it is easier for me to walk my child when she is babysitting, or to pick up my child when she is babysitting, than to load him up in a car seat, to leave her driveway, get drive down the road and to go into her, my driveway because of the traffic. But every time I leave, she's telling me, "Watch the traffic because people don't stop on Weaver. I would just like somebody to watch the traffic on Weaver Street." That's all she's talking about. You can't see to pull out. You have to pull out into Eagle Bend to turn left or to turn right. That's why she wants the crosswalk moved. Do you know how many times I've had to yank my son back because people don't stop? Those are the things she's talking about. Again, if somebody would just go out and monitor for a day at different times, you would see these things. She's telling you she's got the video footage. Yes, I agree with you that people are speeding all around this city. It's not the speeding. It's the specific traffic pattern happening on Eagle Bend in this specific stretch. That's all she's asking you to check. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else?
Is, is it, I mean, can we have?
Question, agree?
No, I, I was just commenting on, I mean, I understand the frustration. I think we all do. I mean, I think what I would like, and, and city manager may not want to, and city council may not have, may not want to either. But I would like a forum where we could have a workshop where, where dialogue may be a little easier to have and, and solutions can be discussed and, and brought back to council. And I would like, and while Dana, I know your issue's personal, this is, and I get it. I live on Eagle Bend. I understand the importance of it. But I would like to, you know, perhaps have it open to, to others that, because you're not the only one that's experiencing it. And I, I want, I want the solutions to be able to be practical and, and let us all come to an agreement. And I'm, and that may not be the will of council or the will of the city manager. But I, I'm willing to, I think that that may be a, a productive use of our time. And then you can feel that you're being, you know, heard. And, and I think we're trying to. I mean, I know Scott's been trying to work with you, and I know the city manager's been trying to work with you. And obviously, you're not happy. So we, I think that may be another opportunity, though, for you to voice some things and do a workshop where we can maybe have some breakthrough for you.
I've got one question.
Sure.
Moving the crosswalk. I'm looking at Google Maps and there is a crosswalk across Weaver. Move the crosswalk where?
What I, and I could do my portfolio if you all.
Well, I mean, I've had it, got it.
Dana, if you'd like to, if you're gonna speak, please come to the podium, please.
I'm sorry. Well, I think personally that it would be better to square off the corners because they're round like this, which, you know, people have the inclination just to go with that curve. I mean, we all. I mean, we all do it, everybody makes mistakes, we all drive too fast, but if you square it off, then people, they're not going to be able to swerve, they'll have to literally stop and think about it.
Let me stop you just for a second, and let me ask Roger, because I know there's, and maybe even Von, what's the challenges with that crosswalk?
Well, and that's why I was a little caution, any and all of us, if, and we'd more happy to do a workshop, but we probably would need to get our traffic engineer there, because any and almost all of this stuff has to meet the federal highway standards, and that's where we have to make sure that we fall from a liability standpoint in the crosswalks and any of it. I mean, I'm sure some of it could be done, but we just need to make sure from that standpoint. And that's why, when Amanda mentioned about where the speed humps went, we actually had a traffic engineer look, and he kind of decided where he thought the best locations, from a visibility standpoint and all of that, where they would go. So we actually had the traffic engineer decide where those went. So if we did any type of workshop, I would want to invite them to come to it, to be there, to kind of be able to answer some of these questions, because I'm not qualified to answer them, and really, Bill's not either, and so we definitely want them there. So that would be a question even, I would probably want to wait and have them answer.
While I get there, I'll-
Let's go back to my question. No, no, okay, forget about rounding the curb, I'm talking about moving. Just my question was, and I'm not trying, I promise, just asking a question. Move the crosswalk where?
I would think it would need to go forward, because like she's saying, they're both like, they're both of the houses that are on the corners, it's round and in.
Okay, I see that. So, okay, let me ask you. If you move the crosswalk forward, what's that going to do to your four seconds? How, I'm just, I'm not an engineer, and they may be able to speak to it, but move, but again, just stay on task. Moving the crosswalk forward, I'm looking at it right here.
Mm-hmm, I'm going to tell you.
How's that going to increase you from four seconds to six and a half? Or seven, or whatever your desired amount?
Okay, if you square it off, and I've got information on that too, I've got an article I can send to you. I would assume that squaring it off would be the big one, because who's going to swerve around a square corner?
But okay, that's not, you're still evading my question.
Then you leave the crosswalk at the-
Heard my answer. Okay, go.
You square it off on the corners, on this side and that side, some of my research, you could just simply put a white line, like you would the railroad. Okay, people can just go through that if they want to, but it is a mind indicator that says, oh, maybe I shouldn't just zoom right through or swerve right. And if you square it off, people are going to have to stop and really think about turning. It's, all this is done the mental thing.
But don't you think that that red stop, I mean, I'm not beating this morning, that red's, I don't personally-
If you look at it now, or even if you go there, it's just so far back. Like, in order for you to be able to see traffic coming from the left to turn right, you have to go way back, you have to-
I understand, I know, I live on Eagle Bend too, and I'm against the speed humps. I live out against, I live out the other direction.
I know, you guys have been, and Mr. Rockford-
And that's me, that's fine, but my point, I know exactly the intersection, travel it long. I still don't see how it's going to increase her ability to get out of her driveway by greater than four seconds.
I can deal with that, I can park in my car.
I'm just trying to make it safer.
Okay, overall. Yeah. Okay, okay.
Well, again, guys, this is a good-
It's not a safe intersection.
This would be great discussion points, and maybe during, even between this meeting and next meeting, maybe Von and Roger can come up with some solutions, but I think it is a good idea to have some workshops, maybe we'll centralize certain parts of town to do that. That'd be good discussions to have during that time, what people want to do, and really what we can do from a legal standpoint, from state requirements and all that. But thank you all, I appreciate it.
One last thing, are there any signs you mentioned? Driveway signs, children playing signs, are there any signs?
No signs, any kind of driveways. And that's why I feel like you square it off, and you rearrange, and I've got, I have a home that-
Or that seems like a residential street.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's some way to do that, because not a lot of space there, because it's not familiar, because it's rounded. I hope that you all understand that. I've lived here thirty years, thirty-eight years, thirty-eight years, I've lived here and worked here, and raised kids here and ran a business here, and this is my home. This is my home.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? In regards to communications to the mayor, Catherine Burbank isn't here this evening. I do want to remind that the Fall Antique Festival is the thirtieth, Friday the thirtieth, and the first of October. So it looks like there's going to be beautiful weather, so please come and spend some money. Also, one of the pleasures I have as mayor, I get to ask the council for approval for a grand marshal. And there's several on the list, and there's a lot that's very worthy of it, but I thought someone that I thought would be, I thought it'd be a great person to represent our city, and to recognize him for all his accomplishments, that he's given the city, really, all his life. So I'm going to ask E.T. Stamey to be our grand marshal, and it'd be a great way to go out, and I'm going to work with Kelly Johnson to have the Blaze teammates, the current and past, following you behind the car. You're not going to be driving the car, by the way. We're not going to let you drive. But I think, I think there's nobody better than to ask you to do that, so. Hey, your motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, E.T. Leaving long, we don't have any city reports today, I don't think Kelly's here. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Gann.
The Board of Zoning and Appeals met on September twelfth. Deferred Business applicant WB Realty requesting several variances in connection with a broad street development, and those were approved. Applicant Anderson County Schools requesting variance for zoning ordinance on Arterial Road, major collectors on Hillcrest Road, and that was approved. Applicant David Crowley requesting variance from section access control for a driveway, and that was approved. And Christie Hicks requesting a variance for density requirements on a PUD, and that was approved. Then the Regional Planning Commission, WB Realty brought forth a site plan review, which they wish to have approved. There are still some issues there that we need to deal with for approving the site plan. They also requested a rezoning, which is on our agenda tonight, and the council did recommend the rezoning, but deferred action on the site plan until things were, some of the things were cleared up. John and Kim Mall requesting rezoning from R2 to B2 for their property on Charles Severs Boulevard. This is down near Mariner Point, and you have a map in your packet on that. It is a property just recently purchased there. Applicant William Underwood requesting annexation for property, that was deferred. Applicant Linda Harris requesting final plat review for property on Eagle Bend Road, and that was approved. Christie Hicks requesting site plan review for approval for a planned unit development on Charles Severs Boulevard. That's Alpine Drive, and that was approved. And then Matthew Whiteside requesting final plat review and approval for property on Park Avenue, and that was approved. Then John Davenport asking for some plat reviews, and those were deferred. Jane Holt requesting final plat review and approval for a property located at 331 Sunset Boulevard, and that was approved. And Terry Toma requesting final plat review for property located on Wellwood Lane, that was approved. And then David Crowley requesting final plat review and approval for a property located on Black House Valley Road. A busy night in many, many regards. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Vice Mayor Faris.
CUB met and conducted its regular business with updates on status reports and work order approvals, and we reviewed financials year-to-date, and nothing unusual or to report, all's well.
Any questions for Zach? Larry, do you have anything under other committee reports? Anything growing on the-
Nothing I can think of at present time.
Okay, thank you. General Government Report, Mr. Howe.
Mayor, start off with deferring to Chris for the financials. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we've completed two months of the fiscal year, so about seventy percent of the fiscal year has passed us. We're right on target with our expenditures at sixteen percent. Revenues, we're at seven point six percent, which we expect local taxes start coming in in October, November. So we're in good shape as far as revenues go. We are very strong in our local option sales tax. Included in your report this month is the local option sales tax history, and you'll see that we're a little over ten percent above this month last year. So revenues appear to be strong so far this fiscal year, and expenditures are being held to their budgets.
Any questions for Chris? Do you remember how the county looked as far as for the previous month?
I don't. I don't even know in that-
I'll ask you again next time. That's one beating us a little bit. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Police Department, the Police Department has two tactical rifles that do not meet the current needs of our response team. They have requested to surplus these two rifles and trade them with a licensed firearms dealer for two rifles that are compatible with our existing equipment. I would therefore request authorization to surplus two Spike tactical rifles to be traded with a licensed firearm dealer for two similar rifles compatible for our current tactical inventory.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is this, I mean, I don't remember ever doing this, is this something that, do you remember, Larry?
No, I don't.
I mean, you still had the inventory that we've had in the past or something?
We did some Glocks four or five years ago, and we switched from the forty to the nine millimeter. We did that about four years ago, so I think, I think we did-
But it's going back to a licensed dealer, so that's, okay. Any other questions, discussion? We already did first and second, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Just for information, and that's where our Public Works Director is right now, the Public Works Department is currently working on the grading and drainage improvements to Harvard Drive. We expect to be ready to asphalt during fall break, and we'll also be doing the South Clinton Elementary School paving for the parking lot. So once we get that done, Public Works will still have probably two to three weeks' worth of the drainage work to do on Harvard Drive, so we're hoping to wrap that up real quick. Public Works Department, the last two or three weeks, since we've been having good weather, they've been working about sixty hours a week over there on that project. They've been doing ten, twelve-hour days, so they've been getting it.
I was over there the other day, it looks really good.
It's turned out well. Got some really nice homes going in, too.
Any questions? Any questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Under Ordinance's Resolutions, we have Ordinance Number 675. This is the first reading, rezoning R2 to B2 on South Charles G. Severs Boulevard.
That's the property near Mariner Point.
Kim Mall, yeah. Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Real call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Councilman Stamey.
Councilman Hatnaker. Councilman Faris.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance Number 675 passes on first of two readings. Any old business before us? Any new business? Amanda, I do want to say one thing, and we all know you and family and everything, but I hope you know that, and I think Zach said a little bit of it, we all try to find solutions. We're not trying to ignore, or, but it's been a frustrating process for all of us, because we just can't find the solutions that everybody's happy with. So moving forward, I think with this workshop, or even Roger and Von talking, that we'll have, we'll have some type of compromise in what we can do as far as providing those solutions. Okay, thank you.
But I'd like to also say that, though, but based on the statistics, not that we're where we want to be, but the numbers of traffic have gone down, because the device tells that, and the speed has told us that. Now, the people get without the speed bump and forward, and do a hundred and twelve to the next one, I mean, again, we don't know, but I mean, but we have made some-
We have.
We're in the right direction.
Yeah, and it's a holistic issue, it's the type of traffic, it's the intersection, it's the speed. It's not just one, one thing, it's a multitude of issues. And anybody that lives on, that has ever stopped there, you have to pull forward to safely turn left, or, you know, to see, yeah. And so it's an issue, and you have to pull forward into the crosswalk to successfully navigate it in there. So it's, yeah, I get it. That's why I think the workshop can be a successful place for us to really robustly talk about it, and-
Sure, if there is a traffic engineer, let them go out there and watch for a while, whatever they've got to do.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.